Nathan, you're all over the screen.
Am I?
Or on my, on my machine.
Yeah.
Can anyone hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, thank you. Sometimes my Zoom doesn't work very well and I have to log off and log on again.
Well, you're good, you're good. All right, I'll, I'll, I'll call a meeting to order. I don't think we really want to start talking very much until, until Jeff arrives. I haven't seen him.
Jeff is here.
Jeff's here?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Well, let's, I'll call a meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there someone here who wants to talk about something besides the A and R that is before us? Well, I'll take that as a no. So, so Tom Reedy, attorney for Coles is here. My suggestion for starting is that maybe, Michael, you could, you could put the, the A and R plan on, on screen.
Sure.
And, and Tom Reedy could, could talk to us about it.
How's that look?
Great.
Good. I have one question. Is Troy associated with the applicant or not?
Yeah, he is. He's an associate with my office.
Okay.
How you doing, everyone? Yeah, I'm just here. So I'm here to, just in case something's asked of me after, so I can pay attention.
I'll, I'll quiz him after this, so.
There you go. Now you got me in trouble.
So, so Tom Reedy, do you want to talk to us about, about what this does?
Sure. So for the record, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst here on behalf of WD Coles in its Form A. So what you've got in front of you, it's, it's about a forty-one acre parcel. You'll see, you've got lot one to the left of your screen. And then you've got remaining areas. That's about, the lot one is eight point eight eight oh nine plus or minus acres. And you'll see right underneath that, it says it's going to be conveyed to the inhabitants of the town of Schutzbury. It's got about seventy-five feet of frontage on Leverett Road. And then you've got backland, remaining area thirty-two point eight seven four six feet, which is not a separate building lot that is going to be retained by Coles. So here we are, we're up along Leverett Road. There's about a seventy-five by one hundred square foot, or seventy-five by a hundred foot, about seventy-five hundred square feet of a landing easement area. And that's for Coles' timber use, because you'll also see that there is a twenty-foot wide right-of-way marked off over lot one, which is going to be conveyed to the inhabitants of the town of Schutzbury and reserved to Coles, leading back to that, that, that forest land. And so the idea is for Coles to, in their timber harvesting, to be able to utilize that road to get back to their land and then to have that landing area to put the logs. So when their contractor comes and picks up the, the timber, that's where they're having the staging area. And this is something, I don't know how much folks are aware, this has been in the works for quite some time. There's obviously the municipal building, salt shed, the, the tent, so-called, which already encroaches upon the town land, sorry, upon Coles' land. And this is years in the works, and this is actually, has special legislation associated with it, where the general court, the Massachusetts Legislature, allowed this land conveyance to occur. And so what we're looking to do, because obviously Coles owns that entirety of the parcel, we're looking to subdivide it into that lot one and the remaining land. And what Coles is going to do is to convey to the town lot one. And so this is just one of the final steps besides the conveyance. And Donna McNichol and I have already gone back and forth on the deeds themselves. But we need the A and R in order to actually convey what we've always anticipated conveying to the town. So you'll see the, the property line. It's that darker line. And, and Michael, I don't know if you want to run along it, just so everybody sees it. It's that smaller throat. Yeah, there you go. And then you come down behind Carol Husberg, and then exactly, and then you keep going, and then down again. And then you step over, and then you go up, and then it's a little triangular piece. Yeah, and then straight, if you go up, yeah, so that's gonna, that's the town.
Oh, to here.
Right there, and then perfect.
Okay.
Up and to the left, and then up that seventy-five foot, and then along back to the beginning. So you've got that, you know, it's a, it's an odd-shaped lot, a couple of rectangles, a triangle, and probably a smaller rectangle somewhere in there. So that's what the town is going to get, and then Coles would get that remaining land or retain that remaining land. And as you see, it's, that's not called out to be a separate building lot. That's my story. So if you've got questions, I'm happy to answer them if I can, but a pretty straightforward A and R, and the town is going to be the beneficiary. So at the end of the day, the town is going to own what they currently own, where the, the building, the salt shed is up there, plus this lot one.
Okay. And so the town, so at this point, the, the town owns one building that encroaches on Coles' property?
Correct.
Beacon, do you want Jeff to talk, or can we ask questions?
I don't know. Does Jeff want to talk now?
Is this, is this me, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I've decided for the committee that you're Jeff, and then there's Jeff Weston. It's order of appearance.
Okay. So, so Tom, this whole thing is, is one piece now, with one booking page, the whole thing, all the way from the road to the back.
It should be, yes.
Okay.
And that's why we need to subdivide.
Right. So the only thing that's really hap, only thing that's really happening is there's the, the line between the back piece and the, the triangle there, the line at the back, that's, that's being established. So that line doesn't exist now. That, that's really what's happening here.
That's a great way to say it, Jeff. Yes, that is, that's correct.
Okay. All right. So then the town gets the front piece, and then there's a, a right-of-way with, with twenty, twenty feet. One, one aspect of our zoning, and, and this is not something that the planning board really has purview over tonight, but it, it could affect you later. And, and we always point these things out to applicants when they come in, because they may not know all the quirks of our zoning, but there is a fifteen-foot property line offset for driveways. Supposed to be fifteen feet from property line. Little buffer. So it, it looks as though, at least at that, at that one point there, if you go back, it.
Talking about this, Jeff, in here?
Yeah, if you just go back a little bit.
It looks like almost all of it.
Oh.
I mean, there's a, if fifteen feet is what you need, then this, this isn't going to do it. You can see in a couple of places, it certainly encroaches on that, that side yard or an adjacent property line.
Right. It looks like it does it in a couple places. So anyway, this is something for you as a zoning lawyer to think about, because the question is, is this a driveway? Usually driveways have something at the end of them, like a, like a building or a structure, a house or something. Is this a driveway? So you're probably going to have to think about that as you, as you go forward with this alignment. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Yeah. And, and I think the intent here is, and I can, I'm trying to pull up the deed so I can look at it. I think the intent here is really just to reserve a right to get back to that timberland.
Right. And, but, and the, the driveway thing would come into play if something were actually constructed there.
Right.
No one's going to prevent you from navigating that. But if it's a constructed driveway, then the, the zoning setbacks could, could attach.
Ask a follow-up question, just because I think that the crosshatching represents wetlands, if I'm correct, right?
No, I don't believe so. What you see inside the E's?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it, it, it doesn't. That's supposed to represent, so this first.
Okay, sorry, just looking at the key. Go for it.
Okay, so that, that first square that you have, and let me see if I can.
Seventy-five by one hundred.
Yeah, and so you know what? If, if it's all the same to you. Let me see. If you want to let me share the screen, I've got the PDF. I can just drive a little better.
Sure. And the reason I ask is when we discussed this last week, the Concom pointed out there, there is an existing wetlands question. So I wanted to clarify that before I should have asked my subsequent question, but.
Sure. So can you see this? Can you see the plan?
Yep.
Okay. So you have this area right here, and so that's just that proposed landing area, about seventy-five by a hundred, and that's the landing area you'll see called out additionally here. And then you've got, this area is the right-of-way, and you'll see the, the E's, if you will, that E series. And if you go over to the right side, you'll see that there's a bearing table. And so, because it's too small here to be able to fit, you know, the direction, so you know, EA is south eighty-four degrees, twenty minutes, twenty-seven seconds, east a distance of forty point eight nine feet. So you can't fit all of that in here. So we've got that all called out in this bearing table over here. From my understanding, there are wetlands on the site. And I think that's probably why this road, which I believe is an existing wood road, goes the way that it goes, instead of maybe more direct to the back, because I think it looks to, and I haven't looked, but I think to avoid any wetlands. So that's, this road, I believe, is an existing woods road that goes back there.
Okay, so if I just restate what I think you said, somewhere probably where it says to be conveyed on lot one, somewhere in that random area is where the wetlands are, not in the front crosshatched area.
Right.
That's helpful. And so the other thing I, we discussed this last time, I know from previous conversations, when I was on select board, because it's been that long, that it, it seems like there's two, there were, and this is just information, I don't necessarily, I think it, it speaks to, you know, approval or not, but the motivations, one were that the, the so-called tent, but the building from the highway department was already overhanging. So that was, and then the fact that in trying to resolve a water quality issue and digging a well, as the town wanted access to the lot one land. So there's probably two motivations, is that correct?
That is correct. You nailed them both. Yeah, DPU use and, or DT, DPW use, excuse me, and well water, I think was. And I think that the well water had been resolved, has been resolved, but I'm sure, you know, having a backup makes a lot of sense. And, you know, the process had started probably five or six years ago, from my understanding of it.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
Hi, I'm Tom, I'm Miriam DeFon.
Oh, hi, Miriam.
Hi.
Thanks for your help.
Hi, yeah. So I just wanted to clarify that that crosshatch area was viewed by the Conservation Commission last summer, because the highway department applied for a permit from us, and we were looking behind that building. And we did delineate a wetland in the area where there's a crosshatching. So I, I just want to clarify that that area is have a wetland, and you know, I haven't looked at personally the, the, that lot, but if you look at the DEP maps, there is a stream crossing and a large wetland in that area. So I'm suspecting that this proposed right-of-way will be in an area of wetlands. So one of my questions is, because if it's under a forest cutting plan, you know, DCR allows forest roads for forestry practices, even if they're in wetlands. But I'm not sure how that works in terms of the town's agreement. Is that part of the agreement that it would be for a forest cutting plan? And right now, I don't think there is a road. You can't see it from the road. I, I don't know in the interior if there's a woods road. But if you're from the road, it looks forested, it doesn't look like anything has been prepared. So if it was going to be a driveway or a more permanent road, then it would require a notice of intent. Because even with the DP exemptions, if it's a permanent road, those are not exempt. If it's a temporary forestry road, those are exempt from Concom oversight. So I'm just wondering.
That's good, that's good to know. Yeah, and, and so I guess my response would be, if it requires an approval, we'll go and get an approval. And I, I think that the limit of agreement with the town was for Coles' use for timberland. I think that's what it was. And I'm just trying to look at Mass Mapper now to see if there's anything mapped out there. And obviously, that's good, but not this positive.
I just wonder if the language that's worked out with the town makes it clear that it has to be a temporary road and temporary stream crossing, because if it was a permanent one, then it wouldn't be exempt, and there'd need to be a notice of intent.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's permanent. But I can check with Shane on that. Obviously, a little bit different than the, the Form A, but something I'll flag and then talk to Shane to find out if there's something out there, or how they've used it, if it's part of his forest management plan or not. Are there wetlands out there, et cetera, et cetera? And then I can talk to Donna as well, just to run all that to ground.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you for the input.
So you have two issues that you've been advised about, courtesy of the planning board. One is the zoning setback for driveways, if indeed it's going to be a driveway. And number two, the wetlands that appear to be up front as well, so.
Yeah. And can I ask one, just follow-up question on the wetlands thing? Because I was, the reason I asked about the crosshatching, I was, uh, Jeff, I was looking at the planning handbook that I finally have my hands on. And one of the things that was, you know, I was looking at, you know, it seems like A and Rs were basically looking at them and unless there's an issue with subdividing, we approve them. But one of the things that jumped out to me was that they can require subdivision plans rather than A and R on the count of wetlands, if it was, I'm looking for the language here, but if it basically prohibited, uh, let's see, what is this? What did it say? I sent it to you, Jeff, earlier.
Yeah.
So if you, if you want to bail me out as I'm scrolling through this thing, but I just, I was not, I mean, I'm not an expert on A and R plans, but I'm just curious if that came into play, the fact that there were wetlands on the frontage part of this. If, as Miriam is saying, which I didn't know prior to, if, if that's an actual issue for anybody.
Yeah, it, I mean, A and Rs can be denied in certain instances, but not for the mere presence of, of, of wetlands on or near the frontage. But if, if, if the wetlands totally obscure, in other words, run the, run the length of the frontage and, and prevent access. And if the wetlands are so deep that a, a small crossing is not possible, that where it's not a limited project becomes a major project, that's an instance where a planning board, if it has its information, can cite it in denial.
Yeah, I just found it. It says, if the wetlands either prohibit the practical and safe access from the way by Leverett Road to the lot, or to the buildable portions of the lot. So clearly, this, we're not talking about buildable portions. But it sounds like because one could at least have a temporary road in there, and if they're not fully obstructing, that this would, would not come into play. Because it looks like the SJC does approve partial. Okay, that's, that's clarifying. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there, there've been other instances, I mean, a, a cliff, do the same thing, a vertical cliff that obscures the total frontage. You can deny an A and R and get away with it for that.
Yes. And just to clarify, I'm not looking to deny it. I'm just trying to understand, given the complexity of the wetlands.
Well, that's, that's really all we could do, is we deny it or approve it. We can't condition it. So we, we have to make that, that bifurcated, bifurcated choice.
Right. And I don't know, it's even deny, it's denying the A and R, but in denying the A and R, you're requiring a subdivision plan, I think is how I understand it.
Yeah, you, you, you don't endorse it, and you do that for a reason, and you get that, that reason to the town clerk within your time limit. So.
Okay, thank you for the lesson.
So here, I just kind of taking the liberty to share my screen again. So it looks like you've got the existing town property here. This is that neck that we're talking about. And this is just the Mass Mapper, which is obviously formerly all of our Mass GIS system. And then if, you know, you can, looks like maybe there's a wetland, either break there, or there's a road that is in that area. Looks like the wetlands are over on that side. So if you recall, as they'll show in hopefully a minute, you know, the road comes this way and back up here. And, you know, obviously, Miriam, we said you, you found wetlands out here. They're not shown here, but that doesn't, like I said before.
And it's, yeah, and it, it's important to remember that the Mass Mapper wetlands are only for general planning purposes, not for any regulatory purpose, because they're not exact, and they always have to be ground-truthed.
Absolutely. And I think I'm just, I was looking to get a sense of what are we talking about here? And I'm somewhat encouraged to see this, because that tells me maybe something is here. Especially if then we go back to that map, if I can bring that one up. And again, we're, we're a little bit off topic compared to what we should be, but I think it's still useful, so I can go back and tell Shane particularly. You know, you have that same thing that comes down here. So when I see that, and I see what Mass Mapper has, I tend to think there might be some truth to it. But well, obviously, you know, I'll talk to Shane and, and Miriam. I can always send you an email to let you know what Shane has done over the years. If something's there, if something's not there. And then them using it for, for logging, which is what I suspect they'll be doing.
Beacon, do you want a motion? Do you want to discuss more?
Yes, I was about to note, I hear the conversation petering out. I'd be, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
Could I, could I ask a question first?
Please.
I, I heard Tom, it's Tom, the attorney, right? Yeah, my guess. You said, well, I assume that the road is for logging purposes to, do, does Coles have to say what they're using? Assuming, do they have to state the reason for having this road? That's my question. As far as the A and R process, no, I don't believe so. As far as the town conveyance process, I think they have a right to pass and, and repass. I don't know that they've said, you know, I don't think they've said for any and all purposes. I don't know that they said for only a specific purpose. I think they just reserved the right to, to pass and repass over that right-of-way as shown on the plan. And I think that's more of a title, from a title perspective, and not necessarily a zoning or a wetland or a use perspective, but just kind of reserving, because they're conveying the fee simple ownership to the town, and then the only way to actually reserve something is to reserve something like they're doing. So they don't, they don't have to state a purpose or reason. My, my other question is, who maintains the road and plows it and so forth? Who's responsible for that? That's a great question. I would think because Coles is benefited by the easement, it'll be their responsibility to, to maintain it. So this will be a private road? Yes, yeah, I don't, I don't see this as being a public trail or public way or public anything. It's on public land, and so there's only so much that, I mean, Coles can do to prevent people from being on it, because I think it's conveyed to the inhabitants of the town. And so as long as the inhabitants of the town's use doesn't frustrate the intent or purpose of Coles' use, I don't think Coles can restrict, and I don't think the town frankly, could restrict. I, I'm not so, I, I'm not so much concerned about the public using it. I'm more concerned about who's paying for the plowing and maintenance of this road. If it's on public land, which it will be, because it's conveyed to the town, does that mean that Schutzbury trucks are going to have to go in and maintain that road during the wintertime and, and during the springtime? And if there are floods, is the town responsible for maintaining the road? And that could be a, a significant expense. I know I happen to live on a, in a private road, and I have to pay for the plowing of my road. So I, I'm wondering about the maintenance of this road. I'm sure Coles would love this to be considered a private road. But it's, it's really just a, a woods road or a woods trail. And so it's an easement, it's a right-of-way that, that they've reserved, and the town doesn't have any obligation to maintain it, because it's not for the benefit of the town. It's for the benefit of, of Coles. And so they're the ones that have to, if they want to use it, they've got to maintain it. And they're using it at their own risk, too. Right. So that, that is stated somehow in this. I don't think so. I think that's just, that's like, I don't know, the, the default law when it comes to easements. Because the, the Coles would be considered the dominant estate, the town would be considered the servient estate, and it would be the dominant estate's responsibility to maintain the easement that is on the servient estate's land. I mean, because you could imagine a different scenario when it was to private parties, and there's something benefiting somebody else, and they say, not only am I crossing your land, but also you have to maintain it. How about, how about those beans? And so that's just not, you know, think of a thing of fairness, just not how it would work. So similar here, it would be the, the beneficiary's obligation to maintain.
This is all, you know, this is not what we would, what we consider in an A and R. This is something that would be more the subject of the. You know, this is not what we would, what we consider in an A and R. This is something that would be more the subject of discussions at a select board meeting.
Okay.
Where, because there were other parcels involved, uh, down at the lake, I guess, that, that are also involved in this. So this is a mutual. Thing between the town and Coles, which everyone believes is in their benefit. And. The select board and our town attorney are going to be discussing it at their meeting. That's where the nitty gritty is gonna be.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, another way to uh, say it, Mr. Weston, is that uh, you know, thi- this uh, well, if we act to approve this A and R, it, the only thing it does is. Change the lot line so that there's two lots instead of one. It doesn't actually um, represent the conveyance of the land. To the inhabitants of Shute's period, that, that's kind of like Jeff said, that goes to the select board and everything like that. But I do have a question, Jeff, um, and anyone else that might know is, you know, with. With something like this, where there's a road on the A and R plan, and uh. You know, for, you know, for example, here, there might be a wetland, right? And you know, if there's a. You know, if that area up close to the street is overgrown, right? And then uh, you're talking about maybe just clearing some vegetation. You know. I mean, you know, that, that's the kind of thing that would require, uh, you know, stuff before the Conservation Commission. But is there any kind of like implicit approval of it that would come from an A and R when you're, when you are approving? You know, an A and R plan that does have this, this road mapped out on it, or is that kind of like it's extra information, and the only thing that. You're really doing is splitting it?
Probably extra information that they stuck on the plan, because they're gonna use this plan both for the purposes of tonight and for later purposes with the select board. And th- this plan will probably be recorded. Um, so they got everything on one plan to be efficient.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So there's no, there wouldn't be any kind of uh, legal consideration of liability for approving something like that, even if what's uh, you know, put on the. Uh, plan ends up uh, would possibly be rejected under other uh. Paths.
No, that, that, that's, that's not what we're approving. All we're approving is that.
Okay.
Is adding that one line at, at the rear there to separate those two pieces.
Alright, um.
I also, it seems like. You know, just from town self-interest, um, assuming that the water drilling issue was resolved, the town doesn't really have to get back there, so. Any clearing would probably be at the desire of Coles, and if Coles had to do something, and they had to get approval from the Concom. Um, that would most likely happen before the town was interested in doing something. Because the town doesn't have to get back there for any purposes.
Yeah. So, um.
So. So, Tom, in terms of identifying for the motion, I'm referring to book eight oh eight, page two eight three. Is that correct?
I, I, I would think you can just make a motion to approve the Form A and the A and R plan that was presented, and then whatever the Apple, Form A application is. I don't think you want to make any reference, because this hasn't been recorded yet.
Okay.
That, that eight oh eight that you referenced is kind of like a source plan that Randy Isner's office used when they went to draw this.
Yeah, I, I would take your motion off the title block of the plan, if, if somebody's got the title block in front of them.
Oh, all I got is this one page, so.
Well, the, 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 the title box gives you information about what plan you're moving to approve.
You're talking.
Lower right hand corner.
Yeah, down here. Yeah, I looked at that. It doesn't have much. Um, that's. There's, the only thing it has is an identifier, it said it was, I guess, the plan was created December twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Other than that, it's, you know, just prepared for WD Coles. But um, so I'll move to approve the A and R um, for land on Leverett Road, proposed by WD Coles. Dividing the lot into lot one and lot two, um, as discussed at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, more discussion? He, hearing no voices, I, I'll call the roll. Jeff Lacy?
Hi.
Uh, Robert Raymond?
Hi.
Um, Michael DeCara?
Hi.
Let's see, who's here? I'm.
Nathan's here and Jeff Weston.
Um, I.
Nathan?
Hi.
I'm an I. I, I, I think we have it.
Thank you very much. Thanks for making this special meeting. We really appreciate it. And Miriam, I'll talk to Shane about what's happening out there, and we'll get back in touch with you.
But I wa- I was happy to do it. It, it was, when the ball gets dropped, it's good to pick it up quickly.
We really appreciate it. It was, it's really nice of you all. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Alright. Hey, Deacon, can I, I just have a. Quick question for, for you and our committee in terms of uh, logistics on solar bylaw. So. Um, for the version that we discussed last meeting, it's, you know, it's a public record. And I'm thinking it might be helpful just to put that on the, the planning board website. But I didn't want to do that without checking. And then the second part of the question is, I'm thinking about the August meeting. When we discuss the next version based on everyone's input and Jeff's edits and all that kind of stuff. Um, that it might be helpful to post that version if we want to actually have informed. Public comment in advance of the meeting, since it's so lengthy. So, but I didn't want to do any of that stuff without checking um, with everybody beforehand.
Okay, good. And one thing I wanted to say was that it, um. Um, we might, we might want to postpone. Our next meeting from the eleventh of August to the eighteenth, so Carrie can be there.
I think it was scheduled on the eighth, if I'm.
It's on the eighth.
For the eighth, well, the. Oh, I'm sorry. But still, Carrie's gonna be taking a vacation.
I won't be here on the eighteenth, so.
Okay, well, my, my date was wrong. I, I hear that.
Well, if you want to go a week, then the fifteenth.
But that, but what I'm saying is that's within Carrie's vacation.
Okay, um, the eighteenth would be a bad day for me, um, returning from being away.
Yeah, Carrie, are you around on the eighth, or?
So I'm actually bringing my laptop with me. Um, I probably could, like. Do it, like, I get the hold of the meeting if needed.
Are you?
I know I'm gonna be gone for, like, a while, for like, close to like, two or so weeks, which wasn't my initial intention when I was. Planning this, but it's the way that it happened. So I don't mind, like, I'm still planning on being my, bringing my laptop, so I could probably still do the eighth.
Well, since, since we're now allowed to have remote meetings, I mean, would it work that we just record it? And someone else opens, you know, if Nathan opens the meeting like he was doing for a while. Um, and to record it, you can just do it when you come back at your leisure. It wouldn't change the schedule of the meeting, and you wouldn't have to. Take minutes during your vacation, which is really not a good fun thing.
Okay, it's, either way is fine, um.
We don't want you to hate us.
No, not at all.
I withdraw my suggestion for meeting change.
Okay, well, Carrie, thank you in advance for your flexibility.
Yeah, no problem. I mean, it's only like, the, we only meet like once a month or so, maybe twice, so it's really not so bad.
And we're so much fun to hang out with. Okay, so based on what I said, you guys are all cool with. The, the posting of the past document and maybe a few days before the meeting, whatever the updated version is, it's past semester. Um, doing that. Won't be surprised to anybody. I'll take that as a yes.
Cool.
And Jeff, I'm waiting for your edits.
Good.
So I, I, I have, I have a couple of questions from you I need to respond to, and then I need to get, edit that whole thing. So I will.
Cool, thank you.
I, I, I'd like to say thank you for, um, Jeff, and especially Nathan and Jeff for bringing me up to speed. Obviously, I'm not sure. I, I've never been a planning board member, so a lot of this information I don't know. So thank you for your patience with my um, uh, learning curve.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so Jeff, I, I should mention that there is a thing called CPCT. Yeah, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. It's a, um. It's an organization that provides training modules. Normally, there's a, a, a big conference in the spring in um, in Worcester at um.
Holy Cross.
And you can go there, and you can take all kinds of, of, of courses that are directly relevant to what we do.
Oh, interesting.
So um, I'm not sure how they're, um, how they're doing it now. I haven't heard a ton from them. Um, maybe it's online, but it's, it's Citizen, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. Uh, so if you kind of look that up or Google that up, you'll, you'll see what they're up to. It's very beneficial stuff. Teach you all about A and Rs and special permits and.
And, and Jeff Weston.
I, I'm sorry, yeah.
I, I would just echo that. Jeff told me about it, and I found it helpful. Uh, my sense is, aside from the workshop, there's actually written documentation, so. You can probably just go there and read some stuff as well, even if they're not recorded or offered workshops. It's, they still benefit.
You said Citizen Planner Training Collaborative.
Right.
Okay, great. I appreciate that, because there's a lot of information that I just don't know. And uh, obviously, you um, you, you um, know this, and uh, I'd like to get up to speed as fast as possible. So thank you, Jeff Lacy.
Welcome.
Uh, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, that was Robert?
Nathan.
Nathan.
Okay, um. I'll, I'll call the roll. Um, Michael DeCara?
Hi.
Jeff Weston?
Hi.
Jeff Lacy?
Hi.
Nathan?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
I'm an I.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you all.
Night, everyone.
Night.